I'm the Chair of the County Board this year. On my left, fellow Commissioner Jennifer Brinkman. On my right, Commissioners Roma Amundson and Vice Chair Commissioner Bill Avery. Joining us this morning from the County Attorney's Office, David Durbin. From the County Clerk's Office, we have the Clerk Dan Nolte and Kelly Lundgren. From the County Board Office, we have the Chief Administrative Officer Carrie Egan and the Deputy Chief Administrative Officer Anne Ames. Now if you please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, would you please start the agenda?
A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall through the hearing room. Additionally, a copy of all written material to discuss today's open meeting is available from the County Clerk's staff. At the front of the hearing room, the material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE dot gov. Agenda item 100 minutes, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on Tuesday, October 17th, 2017.
Move approval.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held last Tuesday, October 17th. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing on, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Amundson?
Abstain.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries three yes, one abstention. Number two, reclaims, approval of all claims processed through October 24th, 2017.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve all claims processed through today. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Number three is a special presentation, juvenile diversion update. Sarah Hoyle, Human Services Director. Bruce Prenda, Chief Deputy County Attorney. Jeff Blymeister, Lincoln Police Department Chief of Police. Russ Ewing, Lincoln Public Schools Director of Student Services.
Good morning, Sarah with Lincoln Lancaster Human Services. This is a presentation from an update that we came to you with about 18 months ago. We proposed two different things. We proposed that we restructure our juvenile diversion program and we also proposed to you that we take all the juvenile cases and place them under the County Attorney's Office. This didn't yield really any kind of additional funding coming in to move those cases over for the Board. It did yield a cost savings of about $200,000 in the juvenile diversion piece of this. However, you trusted in what we did. You heard that it was going to benefit families and children and you supported it. And so I wanted to have, be held accountable for what we said we do and show you the results of those efforts. So Bruce Prenda and I and Russ Ewing and Chief Blymeister will be presenting on different aspects of juvenile diversion and how this rolled out.
Bruce Prenda, Chief Deputy of the Juvenile Division of the County Attorney's Office. And, sorry, just hit the down arrow. Things are going really well and hopefully you'll get that same sense going through some of the statistics that we have here. These are the things that we'll go through, the, what we call juvenile interventions, truancy diversion, school-based diversion, early assessment, and then the diversion program itself. This slide shows comparison between 2016 and 2017. And the first area is in the area of petitions filed by the County Attorney's Office. And in 2016, petitions filed by both the city and the county. That first section there shows this number of city cases, just over 200 city cases. And then total city and county cases in 2016, over 800 petitions filed in juvenile court. In 2017, as of October 10th, we're at 500 petitions. Over 300 petitions fewer filed in juvenile court. The second category is what we call letters. These are letters that the County Attorney opts to send out. I call them warning letters. They're letters to the juvenile and the family that say, your son or daughter was contacted by law enforcement and as a result of that contact, you've taken certain steps to correct the behavior and we trust that you'll follow through with that and we're not going to file anything, there'll be no further consequence from the County Attorney's perspective. And in 2016, we sent about 200 of those letters out. In 2017, so far, we've sent twice as many, over 400 of those letters. And on the issue of warning letters, you'll hear later on about the work of the Human Services Office in doing the assessments of juveniles who have first-time offenses. Their assessments are critical to giving us an assurance that we can send those warning letters out and there's not going to be a difficulty in terms of public safety or those sorts of issues. And then the third category relates to no charges. And what that situation is, you can see we sent in 2016, over 500, and in 2017, so far, over 600, no charges. That situation is essentially when a juvenile's on probation, for example, and they commit another offense. Maybe it's a trespass or a possession of marijuana, some minor offense. Instead of filing a petition alleging that offense, we're now opting to send the reports to probation and then letting the probation officer address the consequence as a part of probation rather than filing a petition. The truancy diversion program, as you know, has been in operation since 2010. We've had over 300 participants, about 50 students per year. We're in three middle schools, four high schools. We have 39 or so active students. The program's currently in an evaluation phase by the university and it has had the effect of decreasing court involvement of juveniles for truancy issues. In the school year 2015-16, we had 310 filings. In 2016-17, 206 filings. And that's the lowest filing for truancy in about 11 years. Project Restore, I'll let Chief Blymeister talk about that.
Good morning, Jeff Blymeister with the Lincoln Police Department. A little bit on Project Restore, started in 2015. It's a partnership between the Lincoln Police Department, Sarah Hoyle and Human Services, the County Attorney's Office and Lincoln Public Schools. Really what it meant, is meant to do is to prevent a deeper dive of kids who either are cited for disturbing the peace or assault occurring on LPS property from going deeper and deeper into the criminal justice system. Also directly tied to not trying to prevent disproportionate minority contacts in that same realm. And as you can see from the statistics that Sarah has compiled here, we really believe that it is working. There's been approximately 163 people that have been eligible based upon the criteria that I just talked to you about and then some things that prevent them from becoming involved in Project Restore. But 76% of the youth accepted and who complete this have not been contacted by us again and have not received, a similar percentage who do not receive a subsequent LPS suspension. Great deal and we're excited to see where it goes.
The next one is the, what we refer to as the SAMI School-Based Alcohol and Marijuana Intervention. This is very new. We started it less than a month ago, so we've really only had around a handful of kids that have been involved with it. It is students that have been referred to the County Attorney because of an alcohol or marijuana possession on school grounds. And this intervention is done at the school and it really involves successful completion, involves three pieces. One is an online, about three and a half hour class through Third Millennium, which is to educate the student on potential use and/or abuse of alcohol or marijuana. A second part is a skip referral. Skip is a partnership that Lincoln Public Schools has with the Lincoln Medical Educational Partnership to where there are community agencies in town who will do an alcohol or marijuana eval on the student. And then the third piece of that is a, what we call a return to school meeting, which would take information from the Third Millennium class, the skip assessment, and it would involve the parent and the student in a kind of a, some critical discussions around what the results of those were and kind of some next steps for the student and family. The ones that we have done, staff have reported that these really have been, some of these difficult conversations have been some of the most productive as far as kind of helping the student related to their use.
Early assessment, Bruce alluded to this earlier. In our office, we have an assessment specialist, so all first-time law violators go through our assessment process. The assessment screener calls the youth and the family, interviews them separately. We use the Nebraska Youth Screen, which is validated and normed for the state of Nebraska. And then that information is compiled, it's scored out, and she also talks to the family about how they held the youth accountable. So for example, if we're talking about a shoplifting case and the family says, "We took the cellphone, we grounded the youth, we called the retail store, they wrote an apology, and they paid them back." What more can we as a system do to hold this kid accountable and change behavior? The parents have taken care of it, they've addressed it, and we put that in a summary and send it back to the County Attorney's Office for Bruce to review. So if you look at the slide, the pie chart, from the assessment and the recommendations, what happens with these kids, a majority of them are either no-charged or sent back to diversion. If they come back to our office through diversion, then that NYSS is used as the mechanism to develop a case plan for the youth to go through diversion. Some of the main components we changed in diversion, and I want to mention too, that I have the privilege of standing up here presenting this, but the people that do the work through my office, through Bruce's office, my office is here, a majority of them are case managing these cases, these youth and families, and they're really making a difference as you'll see with these slides. But, and Judge Heidemann, one of the things we did when we restructured diversion was Bruce and I met with the judges and said, "What, what could we do? What do you think would work?" We also reached out to families to hear their input on what worked in the past, what didn't work. And one of the things we heard from both the judiciary and families was the fee was too much. For regular diversion, it was $120. We were able to cut that down to $60 for families. We also reached out to community partners. You may remember a year ago, our office took over the case management component of juvenile diversion. That doesn't mean that we're the ones that always have direct contact with those kids. We're referring them out to nonprofit entities, to partners in the community, because we know that our engagement with those families are short-lived. We're not going to be in their lives very long, but we're hoping that they stay engaged with the community partners that we refer them to. With that being said, we've also gone outside of the normal realm of who we're partnering with. We're working with places that we know kids like to go, because our goal is that kids stay connected to those pro-social activities in the community once we leave their lives. The online courses, the other thing we changed was, and this really went outside of what every other diversion program was doing. In diversion, most places have cognitive groups where they bring all of the juveniles in together and they have them, they go through some kind of curriculum. If you think about what you're doing by bringing juveniles together who have all committed some kind of offense, what do those juveniles do when they come together in the same room? They talk about why they're there. And then that goes deeper and deeper and deeper. Now evidence is just starting to come out that maybe that's not the most effective thing to do for first-time juvenile law violators. And so we partnered with Third Millennium, which is an online evidence-based curriculum. And now juveniles can either do the curriculum at home, they can do it in the library, if they do it in the library, we try to connect them with other resources there, or they can come into our office. We also have it available in our office. So what's happened, oh, and also the case plan. We recognized that youth, what was happening was it was taking about two and a half to three months for youth to get on diversion. Well, for those of you who've worked with juveniles, you know you cannot hold them accountable for something they did two months ago, three months ago. That's not effective. You need to get in there, provide services right away, assess. And so we were able, through staff's time, to reach out and not send letters anymore, but start texting families, calling families, reaching out to the schools if we can't find them, saying, "You are eligible for diversion. Come in, sign up." And we've been able to go from 73 days from referral to intake to an average of two weeks for families. And then we're seeing a level of higher-risk youth who are coming on, and that speaks to the next numbers. And when you look at it, you might think, wow, why are youth on diversion going down? Is that good? And I would say that is a good thing. And if you saw me, if you were at the NACO conference when I was there, I talked a lot and I think I asked commissioners there, "How many of you, when you were younger, did something that maybe you could have been arrested for?" And even though I said I was closing my eyes, I saw a lot of commissioners raising their hands, saying, "Yes, I could have been arrested." Because when you are younger, as you know, your frontal cortex is not all the way developed. So you do, you do dumb things, right? And research says that 70% of kids who come into our system, if we do nothing, they're not going to come back. 70%. And so is it a good thing that less kids are coming on diversion? Yes, because as you saw on Bruce's slide, he's screening them out. He's no-charging them, he's sending warning letters. Our enrollment, so the enrollment, when we looked at it in 2015, about 50% of youth who were eligible ended up signing up for diversion. We've bumped that up to 96% of our youth who are eligible for diversion, we're getting them signed up. The minority enrollment was 39%. We've increased that to 93%. What we've done is we've partnered with the cultural liaisons, with Russ through Lincoln Public Schools, because we know that a lot of immigrant and refugee families aren't familiar with the system. When they get a letter, even if it's translated, if they get a letter, they don't understand what diversion is, what it means in our system. So reaching out through the cultural liaison just to help with that. And then days in diversion, again, I spoke to this earlier. Our goal is to get in, provide services to these youth, and then get out. So we've managed to, our goal is to get services in place within 90 days and then get out of their families. Successful diversion discharges, we've increased that by about 10%, which made us higher than the Nebraska average. And then unsuccessful discharges, when somebody, when, when staff want to discharge somebody, send them back to the County Attorney for a possible filing, it is a big deal in our office, to the point that they meet with the supervisor, with Becky, and she staffs it with them to see if there's anything that maybe we didn't try with the family before it's sent back to Bruce's office. And I also, Judge Ryder came in, I also wanted to recognize him with his efforts with truancy diversion. And then also, he was part of, when we went to the judiciary, he was part of the providing input as to what he wanted diversion to look like. And, you know, I would say there's the whole, the theme out there or the quote, "It takes a village to raise a child." And you know, that is so true, and especially when we're talking about a system. This would not be possible if we didn't have the police department, if we didn't have the school system, couldn't do any of it without the County Attorney. And the judges are crucial in this whole role. So with that, Bruce, or judges, did you want to add anything?
Well, I missed the first part, so I will just say this, what I heard about Sarah's presentation. I was a deputy public defender for about 10 years before I was appointed to the bench, and that's when we had Cedars involved. And it seemed like there was a, no matter what the offense was, I would deal with a lot of kids that didn't get into diversion, they didn't complete it. And I thought in many instances, the requirements there were more onerous than they would be in court. The expense that they would have to pay, even though they could reduce the fee, it was not very well-known how that worked. It was very expensive to be involved. It took a long time, they had a number of requirements. It seemed to not matter what the offense was. And I remember I had a kid once who was in juvenile court for bringing home a magic marker from school, and his mother insists on him being prosecuted. And so the system, I mean, what are we going to do with that? I mean, a magic marker from school, I think Sarah said a lot of that is true. But there was a period of time where it seemed like anything and everything was filed, no matter what. And they could do diversion, if they didn't want to do diversion, they could do court. And I know, we appreciate the efforts to not have to deal with those sorts of cases, to have them screened out if they don't need to be with us. It allows us more time to focus on the more serious types of circumstances and it lets probation spend their time on the more appropriate cases than, than those types of cases that can better be handled through diversion. So I think they've done a very good job in looking at it from a kind of a start over, let's see what we want to do, what we want it to look like, how quickly it can start. The issue with the minority families that don't speak English, that's a huge improvement from what I've seen as well. Many of the families I would deal with, the parents just didn't have any idea what they, you know, what the letter said, and we'd have to, you know, ask for another chance to go back. And many of my contacts with the County Attorney early on were, can this kid go back to diversion? Because he, you know, they missed the appointment, they had things that occurred. There wasn't a lot of outreach in terms, it was pretty much a letter, as I understand it, in terms of that was the contact early on. So they really have taken a great effort to improve that, reaching out to the families, getting them in, getting them in quicker so they understand why they're there and as opposed to, what am I here for again? Oh, that thing I did eight months ago? Oh, okay. Which is what we saw a lot of before. So I think they've done a really, really good job with that, from what I've seen from my perspective. Yet I didn't hear the first part of her presentation, so I don't know what she covered, but I wanted to indicate that based on what I heard. So, you don't have any questions for me? Otherwise, we'll sit down and...
Any questions for Judge Ryder? Or any questions for any of the presenters? I guess...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have any question... Okay, I don't have any questions, but you still, okay, go ahead.
Yeah, just let me conclude, kind of put up a summary here to essentially say what Judge Ryder and Sarah said. And from this chart, it really reflects the intensive effort of the schools, the police department, the court, probation, all of the players, all the stakeholders in the juvenile justice system are doing the things, it appears, that they're designed to do in the best way that they're designed to do it. The no charges reflect that probation is given an opportunity to deal with those kids who are on probation in the best way that they can with the tools they have. The petitions reflect that the right cases are getting to court and giving the judges an opportunity to deal with those cases. The letters increasing gives us an indication that parents are given an opportunity to correct the behavior of their children. And then the diversion numbers are suggesting that our diversion program is taking those cases that they can best serve those kids in that program. So we're real happy with the way things are shaking out, especially in 2017. There are always things we can do to improve, but this is certainly telling us that we're on the right track in Lancaster County, so.
Any questions for...
I think Chief Blymeister wanted to...
Yeah, one more slide for you. Shield Tonight, similar to the 5-0 Fun Club, which the Sheriff's Office has probably presented to you, in fact, I may have in a different life. Basically, it is a partnership with Human Services where three of our officers, last year, the same three officers, participated at the Salvation Army. It's a leadership club. It's a non-enforcement setting, meant to build positive relationships between these kids and our officers to see the human side of both. And we're starting it back up here in just a few months. Mr. Bradley with the Salvation Army's been a great partner, as has Sarah. And anecdotally, although difficult to measure in these data-driven world, we know that it's making a positive impact. Thanks.
Okay, any questions now? It was, yeah, a very good presentation, Sarah. We very much appreciate your leadership, because I know you talked a lot about the partners involved, but I don't think that we would have had the success if it weren't for you and your staff's involvement in coordinating the process. And so I think you should be commended for your efforts and your staff, because like I said, it's important and I think we're on the right track. I just, you know, looking forward if there's other opportunities out there. I know you're heavily involved at the state and national level, so we look forward to, at least I look forward to, us to come. I think it's something that we need to continue our efforts and, because, you know, we do have a lot of challenges, especially with the population that we have out at the Services Center. Managing the front door is something that you can definitely tell is working. We just need to, I think, probably work on the back door, but we very much appreciate your efforts and your staff and everyone else with the public schools, with the police department, with the County Attorney's Office, and with the courts. It's very much appreciated. Commissioner Amundson?
And I just really wanted to thank the judges, I wanted to thank the police and Sarah's office and the attorneys. You know, what you have done here is you've really shown how you can get people who have a common goal to help others. They work together and they cooperate and, oh, I forgot, the school district, I'm sorry. The school district, and that's a huge player. And anyway, what you actually have done is very effectively, you have broken that downward spiral, because that is what's really important. You can catch a step right at that important time and you can do what is appropriate. And so thank you for your efforts and for your ingenuity and innovativeness and everything like this, okay? Thanks, Sarah. Thanks, everyone.
And in addition to thanking the partners again that came today, I also want to thank the board. Again, we came about 18 months ago and said, "We have two great ideas, can we please try to implement them?" And you believed in it, you believed in the process, so thank you for making this happen.
Thank you for the update, because I think it's important that when we do take under, take these opportunities, that we receive feedbacks to show that what we're doing works. So, thank you.
And I referenced that my staff are here. Carrie wants to know if you guys want to come up and say anything. But Laura's the assessment specialist, Jenny is our, Jenny does everything, so, I think her official title's administrative assistant, but she holds the office together. Becky's the supervisor, Carrie is a diversion officer, and as is Ryan, along with our prejudication program.
Thanks. Thank you all for coming. Mr. Clerk, if you'd continue the agenda, please.
Next is number four, new business. Foray is a resolution instituting eminent domain proceedings against Stevens Creek K LLC and 2K Holdings LLC. Project number CPJ 143, track number one.
Morning. Control of the County Engineering Office. I just wanted to show the location of the bridge that's going to be replaced with a concrete box culvert. It's on North 148th Street, just south of Holdridge, so that's the location. And I, if you had any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Schroeder? No, and I think this is something that we did talk with...
I believe so, at staff meeting, so.
Yes, we have discussed it with Pam, so we very much appreciate you being here this morning. But I don't think we have any questions. Entertain a motion?
Move approval.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to institute eminent domain proceedings against Stevens Creek K LLC and 2K Holdings LLC. Any discussion? Commissioner Brinkman?
I just want to say that I don't take utilizing eminent domain lightly. I think we have, based on the information we have about the communication that has taken place between the County Engineering Office and these owners, I believe that it's in the best interest of the public for us to do this in order to facilitate this construction project, but I am not excited about doing it this way.
Any other, Commissioner Avery?
I agree with Jennifer, and I am so, not excited that I'm going to vote no.
Okay. Any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
No.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries three yes, one no. Bees a recommendation from the Pursuiting Department and Lancaster County Emergency Management to award a purchase order to federal surplus for two Chevy... Management to award a purchase order to federal surplus for two Chevy Tahos. The total amount of the order is $20,000.
Good morning, Jim David Saber, Director, Lincoln Lancaster County Emergency Management. Just wanted to give you a little background information about these two vehicles. They started life with the Department of Homeland Security. They're essentially outfitted as public safety vehicles, so transitioning them over to emergency management will be a very easy fit. I had them inspected at the county shop ahead of time to ensure that they didn't have any mechanical or other issues that we would have to address, and they look like they're both in very good condition. Also, there'll be no impact to the general budget of emergency management. I'll use funds from my emergency management performance grant in order to make this purchase. Adding these two vehicles will allow me to retire the three oldest vehicles currently in our emergency management fleet. There are three Ford Explorers that date back to 1998. So in their service life, they started with the Lancaster County Sheriff's Office, and after a full tour there, they came to emergency management. They've logged a total of 55 years of service and nearly 420,000 miles, so I think it's time to retire those. And as I said, the price point for these two used Tahos that are in very good condition really allow me to effectively manage the fleet moving forward.
Mr. David Saber, just my own, I guess, information, do you know where, what agency they came from?
They were assigned to the Department of Homeland Security. Where specifically they came from, I don't know, but that was part of the inspection process with the county shop to ensure that, again, they weren't subjected to severe use or suffered any prior damage, and from that inspection, both vehicles looked like they're in good condition.
Yeah, I'm assuming that they're probably coming out of the court security...
Okay.
...which is the division that takes care of the federal buildings and properties.
In my career, I've seen a lot of law enforcement vehicles, and these are two very clean-looking law enforcement vehicles.
Yes. And I ask that because I've seen, you know, coming from Homeland Security, they're well-maintained. If they were coming from the park service or from...
Understood.
Forest service, I would decline to take them, but...
Correct, yeah, I, just the eyeball test of these two, that they experienced a lighter use rather than a heavy-duty 24/7 use that a lot of law enforcement vehicles are subjected to.
Perfect. Any other questions from Mr. David Saber?
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the acquisition of two Chevy Tahos from federal surplus. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. C is a professional services agreement between Sovol Solutions LLC and Lancaster County on behalf of the Department of Community Corrections for consulting services to evaluate the supervised sentence conversion reentry program. Term of the agreement is from October 1st, 2017 through September 30th, 2020. The cost to county is not to exceed $70,000.
Good morning, Ms. Southerson.
This is a contract that's going along with that reentry grant. It's the data collection and report writing that's gonna happen for the course of the three years of the grant. So Mitch will need to get started kind of immediately, because we have a responsibility of submitting recidivism data, so we'll need to start collecting some of that now so that we can do some comparisons.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Southerson?
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the professional service agreement with Sovol Solutions for the consulting services to evaluate the supervised sentence conversion reentry program. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Four D is an amendment to county contract C-16-332 with the National Safety Council in Nebraska for online stop traffic diversion classes. The amendment renews the contract for an additional year through June 28th, 2018. The county will pay $17.20 per course for 5,000 online courses.
And that's about half of what we use. We actually use quite a bit more than that, but when we contract with the National Safety Council for these, we have, we, what we purchase is what we own. If we don't use them, we lose them. So, they've agreed to work with us. We purchase a very limited number of them, and then they just invoice us for those, quarterly for those that we go over. So it's, and actually, we've used so many online stop classes that they've reduced the cost by $2 a class, so that's nice.
Any questions for Ms. Southerson? Otherwise, entertain a motion.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend the county contract with the National Safety Council in Nebraska for the online stop traffic diversion classes. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. E is an agreement with the Child Advocacy Center to conduct interviews and medical examinations of child abuse victims, state law enforcement, and prosecutors in their investigations of child abuse. The county will pay $20,000 for the services. Term of the agreement is October 1st, 2017 through September 30th, 2018.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the agreement with the Child Advocacy Center for the purposes of conducting interviews and medical examinations in cases of child abuse. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. F is an agreement between Lancaster County, Region 5 Systems, and the Bridge Behavioral Health for the bridge to assist the county and Region 5 by including in the services it presently provides, the detention of individuals who are in emergency protective custody. Term of the agreement is July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2018.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the agreement with the Region 5 Systems and Behavioral Health to assist the county and the region to provide assistance with individuals who are detained through emergency protective custody. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. G is a recommendation from the purchasing department and Lancaster County engineer to award a contract to Vulcan Signs for the annual supply for aluminum sign blanks. The estimated cost to the county is $8,000.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to award a contract with the Vulcan Signs for the annual supply of aluminum sign blanks. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. H for contracts with following to provide the annual supply of power and hand tools. Terms of the contracts are one year from the date of execution. The cost to county is not to exceed $25,000 for all contracts, and this includes Fast and All, Titan Tools and Supply, Too Fast Supply Company, and Total Tool Supply, Inc.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve four contracts for the annual supply of power and hand tools. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. I is an amendment to county contract C-14-545 with Big Iron Auctions Company for online and onsite auctioneer services. The amendment renews the contract from November 18th, 2017 through November 17th, 2018. There is no expenditure for this amendment.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend the county contract with Big Iron Auctions Company for online and onsite auctioneer services. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Four J is an amendment to county contract C-14-626 with Cardiac Science Corporation using Purchasing Solutions Alliance for automated external defibrillators, related products and services. The amendment renews the contract from October 9th, 2017 through October 8th, 2018. The cost to county is not to exceed $500.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend the county contract with Cardiac Science Corporation for the automated external defibrillators and related products and services. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. K is an amendment to county contract C-15-149 with Redwood Toxicology Laboratory, Inc., using the State of Minnesota MMCP contract for drug and alcohol screening products and services. The amendment extends the contract from October 1st, 2017 through September 30th, 2018. The cost to county is not to exceed $20,000.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend the county contract with Redwood Toxicology Laboratory, Inc. for drug and alcohol screening products and services. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. L is a reappointment of Colleen Ogden to Keno Human Services Advisory Board to a three-year term commencing January 1st, 2018, and the December, ending December 31st, 2020.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to reappoint Colleen Ogden to the Keno Human Services Advisory Board. Any discussion? I'll just make a note that while she's not here, Ms. Ogden's willingness to serve another term on the advisory board is very much appreciated. With that, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Number five are consent items. Receive and place on file the quarterly report for the county attorney's office for July 1st, 2017 through September 30th, 2017.
Move approval of the consent items.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent items. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Next is number six, public comment. Those wishing to speak to items relating to county business not on agenda may do so at this time.
Anyone in the audience wishing to speak on an item not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, please continue with the agenda, Mr. Clerk.
Next is number seven, announcements. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a staff meeting on Thursday, October 26th, 2017, at 8:30 a.m. in the Billuxford Studio of the County City Building. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold their next regular meeting on Tuesday, October 31st, 2017, at 9 a.m. in Room 112 of the County City Building. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a public hearing on the One and Six Year Road and Bridge Improvement Program on Tuesday, November 7th, 2017, at 7 p.m. in Room 112 of the County City Building. County Commissioners can be reached at 402-441-7447 or commish@lancaster NE.gov. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting is broadcast live on Link TV City. For the rebroadcast schedule, visit lincoln NE.gov. Meetings are also streamed live on Link TV and can be viewed on YouTube.
Move adjourn. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adjourn. Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
Okay, that concludes the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting. Going to go ahead and move along to the Lancaster County Board of Equalization meeting.
The CAFNE Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. Addition to copy of all material to be discussed at today's open meeting is available from the county clerk's staff at the front of the hearing room. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Agenda item one are minutes. Approve of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held on Tuesday, October 17th, 2017.
Move approval.
Second.
Should I go ahead and call the roll?
Oh, I'm sorry. Any discussion or corrections? Please call the roll.
Okay. Avery?
Epstein.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Amundson?
Epstein.
Wilton?
Yes.
Motion carries two yes, two abstentions. Next is number two, certification of revised 2017-2018 tax levies.
Move approval of certification of the revised tax levies for 2017-18.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to certify the revised 2017-18 tax levies. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Next are public hearings. The first public hearing is notice of proposed change in exemption status. This is for the Clark Jerry Home Corporation.
Okay, gonna go ahead and open up the public hearing for the notice of proposed change in exemption status? Anyone here to testify in support?
Scott Gaines, Deputy County Assessor.
Do you sound like a swear from that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. This item, the Clark Jerry Retirement Property over on Pine Lake Road, has sold recently to another nonprofit. This is simply to notify both entities that the existing exemption is being removed. We will have a new application from the new owner. We've been in contact with them, and that I think is gonna be scheduled for November 14th. So this is removing it from the old owner, and we will subsequently have a new application coming.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Gaines?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here testify in support of the exemption status change? Anyone testifying in opposition or in the neutral capacity? Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing on this proposed change in exemption status.
Next is 3B, and this is a public hearing for motor vehicle tax exemption applications. This is for Centerpoint, Inc., Lincoln Christian School, and School Sisters of Christ the King.
Okay, gonna go ahead and open up the public hearing for the motor vehicle tax exemption applications. Anyone wishing to testify in support of the applications, in opposition, or in the neutral capacity? Seeing none, I'm gonna go ahead and close the motor vehicle tax exemption applications hearing.
Next is number four. This is action on proposed change in exemption status.